First thing on the agenda is increasing the water sewer bill by 10%.
That's me.
Yep.
Mr. Mayor, I think you still need to go through the process of approving adopting the work session agenda.
Well, I didn't see anything on here.
Yeah. The same.
Alright. You'll have a motion to adopt the agenda.
I saw move. I'll second.
Motion made in favor.
Alright.
Let's vote. Okay. I have Michelle.
Okay. So I've been working on the water and water treatment facility. And the last time that we raised our water rates was in January 1st, 2009. Previous to that was in October 2008. Which means that we haven't had any CPI increases for a very, very long time. So to me, part of the solution is to raise the water bill by 15% January 1st, 2021. Um, I'm a ten.
I'm a ten out there. I'll be a ten out of ten.
So.
Socialists.
We would need to raise the water rate again in July 1st, 2021 by two and a half percent. And then raise water rates again in January 1st of 2022 by another 2%. We'd create a total of 20% by 2022. And the reason is, we should be at 22% more than we are just based on the 2% increase from 2009. So to get us just to a baseline, doing the 15 and then 2.5 and 2.5 will be 20%, which puts us right at the baseline. You said 15% and then? And then 2.5.
2.5.
Mm-hmm. And then another 2.5. And I'll send this out if y'all want to.
No.
Um. So I took the totals, drug utilities, which includes water and sewer. And the revenue from August 2020 was 114,768,88. So it times out by 15%, which is this number here, which would equal that. And so I did it for 2.5, 2.5. So by July 1st, 2022, we would have a $27,048.09 increase in utility revenue. So if we take that and times it by 12, that gives us $224,577.08 more.
Is that realistic though, since August is one of our peak months? And is it the average of the annual revenue?
Uh. Probably not. But my, the point is whether we take it in January or August or March, the total amount of that revenue, additional revenue, is, is only $324,577.08. For our $10 million loan, our first year payment is $425,198. So even with an increase, we're still going to be $100,000 short for our very first year payment. And where I'm giving my numbers for that is I called Larry Holesgate and is this how you make your?
Yeah. Because I could see you as a timing number.
Interest rates have gone down just a little bit. So here's the total financing of $10 million. Within the $10 million is a $100,000 grant. The term is thirty years, interest rate is this, which gives us a loan payment each year of $425,198, which is where I got the number right here. So there's two issues. One, we're going to be short if we don't raise water rates. And two, we're not going to be eligible for any grant money to help with our facility because we're not even at a baseline rate. So I'm coming to you to work session to say, what are your ideas? And what is your proposal for getting a water treatment facility?
According to Annette from the Governor's Office, said that we have the lowest water rates in the state. And we are way under, and in order for us to qualify for any grants from the state of Oregon, our water rates back to it.
Yeah, so projecting into the future, so if we have an average water bill of $43, then we calculate a 20% increase into $8.06.
So you're talking water and sewer increase then?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, water and sewer.
Not as the base of the water.
Correct.
And is the $10 million still projected for what we need for the water treatment plan?
That's correct.
We sold it too much. I thought we had a grant, a bigger grant.
Well.
That's.
Yeah.
Okay. Remember, we worked it out in several, several ways. Uh, we worked it out, half USDA, half coming from Larry Holesgate's group for the Financial Management Authority. Actually, it's not quite $10 million. I think Larry used that because it was just around.
Yeah.
It's close enough. At this. So we looked at some different ways. We looked at maybe a 45% grant from USDA. That still remains to be seen. That might come through. But basically, the rates are pretty much what, and this came from, what Larry sent came from our one-stop meeting, if you remember, we had that like a year and a half ago. Here. Uh, it, it ends up raising the rates somewhere around $20 per month here in the desert.
By the end of the year or?
Oh, no. That's after the project is built.
Oh, okay.
That's after the project is built.
So now there are injuries then?
So we would be looking at an average monthly rate when we were through the project, somewhere around $35.
With just water?
Correct. 28.
28%. So water is cheaper than the sewer currently?
Depending on how much water you use.
That's the base.
When we did the original, when we did the original, we came out at $38.95 for the water rate we needed.
What's our current water base? It's right here?
15 and something.
You can make that bigger. On here, right here.
So the grants, loan forgiveness, is going to play when we exceed the affordability rate. Now Larry came up with this affordability rate, and I think we had that at the one-stop here, $34.96. That may change. I don't know how soon we can get the census data. When does that?
Good luck.
Well, they're done.
They're done.
But actually.
That was, that was supposedly stopped, so they should be compiling that, but I don't remember what the timeline is as far as, like that affordability rate is based on census data, median income, and all the other stuff that goes into that, so that'll kind of be a determinant factor. Um, Daryl, could you explain to them what that, what that means as far as the cutoff, you know, just so that it's clear? There's like a, am I correct that it's a, um, basically it's for the income of our community, this is the highest water rate people should be able to afford a month? Is that correct? Is that pretty much it?
Correct.
Do you have a poverty home?
Right, exactly.
We can do our own canvassing, but not too, but I, I don't think we need to do that right now. The affordability rate is a rule of thumb. It's one and a half percent of the median household income. Sometimes they throw some other stuff in there. That's a good rule of thumb. So if we're 30, if we're being above $35, then the chance for any grant conditions are going to be slim. Now that doesn't, when we built the sewer ponds, it was the same thing. While the public was upset, you know, we couldn't beat the grant, so all our sewer rates were too low. That was just a fact. But just one thing to consider when you're considering the rate of rate, not only our, our current operation and our current capital improvement, but for the debt service and the prices of this project.
Daryl, is this rate that you guys are proposing, does that include current, just regular ma, I mean, is this above and beyond what you guys are currently bringing in to just for the regular maintenance and stuff up the system? Is this on top of that or is the debt service, or is this just with the debt service as far as? In other words, are you guys, if you guys are worried about your rate not making it, and maybe getting it higher since you get some of those grants, are you guys bringing in, you know, future, have you guys calculated future maintenance and?
Yeah.
Okay.
So I I wanted to do just a quick inflation. So if we started in 2009 at $43 for water and sewer, in today's money, that is worth $52.17. So if we predict out to the future, to 2025, hopefully we will be able to have that project done, which is in five years. We also have to consider continuing to raise water bills due to inflation at 3%. Which would mean that we would have a $60.48 then. So all I'm trying to do with the discussion is to think now and into the future as we continue to experience cost per living index increases, inflation. Um, I, I, I put my thoughts on the table, but, but really it's going to be an effort to come to what it is that the town needs and how to work now and moving into the future five and 10, 15, 20 years. Because if we don't increase for another 12 years, we're shooting ourselves in the foot. So we need to get something, something together, a plan or a procedure of how we're going to do this. So that we're not shocking people with, you know, we're going to raise rates 55% and they're being facetious. Um, but even at 20% is a lot, 15% is a lot, 2.5% is a lot to a lot of people. Um, so we need to be vigilant in how we decide. Um, and aware of our town need and, uh, the mean average of what our town has. I don't know the answer. I'm just falling at 15% by January 1st. And two and a half, and then to just gradually do something instead of like, and then gradually. Um.
So so they use the affordability rate to set the minimum that your town has to have based on 2013 data. And it was, I'm from a census site. The median income in Lake County, do I assume the county or do they do it via town?
It's just.
Okay. Which I believe the town is very similar to the county, given the majority of the population. But even if I said higher, that's $36,000 a year, which would put, would that not put the affordability rate at $54 a month? If I did my math right? Okay, so you may not be mapping correct.
Did you say?
Thirty-six thousand?
At 1.7.
Is it 1.7 or 1.5?
1.5.
1.5.
That's the last information I got. So we, you think our median household income is 46?
I remember when I studied it not very long ago, it was, I mean, I'll say it was 40,000 or less than I thought, but even if you said 40,000, then you're looking at a much higher
It's 50.
affordability rate. So this is county.
Well, we can ask Larry where he came up with, that does seem, that seems.
Because I mean, if they're going to say you got to set it here, then that's, that we're not even close to that because I can't amend it in a year, raise, raise that.
It can't be 54.
Am I mathing wrong, right?
No, you know, it can't, it can't be 54.
I wonder, yeah.
So there obviously must be some more components to that.
There must be something else.
They might be using a change CPI or one of the other metrics where they kick certain things in, certain things out.
Are you accepting public comment, Mayor?
Near.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Are you accepting public comment?
Yeah, go ahead.
So I'm Mark Galbertson for the record. Uh, I'm just going to say, not as a commissioner, but as a citizen of the town of Lakeview, I understand why you guys have to do this. Um, yes, it was great that we had low water prices and sewer prices, but the problem is we already have shot ourselves in the foot. And it's just like the county and the railroad. Our predecessors were trying to save money for its constituents, but in the long run, we didn't put money into the infrastructure. And now we're in these predicaments that we're in now. And so yes, it hurts, it's painful, but if we don't start putting in for our retirement, now it's going to be too late. And so we need to, we need to raise the rates on water, as much as I hate to say it, you know, I don't want to pay more, but on the other hand, if we don't, the other side of the coin is, is the infrastructure is just going to continue to depreciate and dilapidate and fall apart. And so not only do I think we, you, the board or city needs to think about meeting your goals as far as paying back the loan, but future, uh, infrastructure costs. And so although it sounds expensive, um, we all need to be a part of making it work. And as a citizen of the town of Lakeview, I'm willing to do my part. And, you know, you need to sell it to your constituents the same way as we all complain about the water. Let's all chip in and make it better. And, you know, I see where you're trying to save money, don't get me wrong, but we, we have to plan for our future. And your predecessors that come after you will thank you for doing it. Because although I'm not slamming previous city council, I'm not slamming previous county and, uh, commissioners, but if we're not putting money into our infrastructure now, our predecessors are going to be in worse pickle than we are today. And so that's all I have to say about that.
Michelle, are you wanting to, once they do these temporary increases, are you wanting to keep the current provision where it should be raising with the cost of living every year? Like it's currently in the books, but the town hasn't been doing?
Yeah.
So just as sort of history, back in 2008, 2009, a CPI escalator was built in by resolution and has never been implemented. So this should have been going up every year and didn't, so people have forgotten that there or who decided not to do it or whatever, so this.
Was it a 3% or just?
Just general poll.
It's ba, it's ba, it's based on the, it goes up or down. In some years, it wouldn't have gone up because CPI was pretty flat. But that was ba, that was stuck in there, that resolution 2008, 2009, and then it never was implemented, so. And I, and again, that might be something, before you look at that escalator, you might want to see if that's enough. Because sometimes it's so flat that it's not, that the sewer price index may not be changing, but other costs might be, so that would be something to ask your, um, public works and your city engineer. Is that going to be enough to keep up with the actual? You know, is that, you know, or you might want it as a flat rate. That's something I think you guys would need to look at. You know, and again, again, it's, I know it's crystal ball stuff, but that's the best you can do. Because sometimes the CPI, and it's kind of the same, like you guys see with like security raises, so sometimes there's nothing. And your costs, there's still a lot of costs that are going up every year. Regardless, so.
Okay.
What would it come up to be?
Well, one and a half percent of $36,000 is 55%. But we got to buy.
Right, well, okay, that's fine. There we go. So that would equate to?
And then the affordability index, I think includes, includes both water and sewer.
Oh.
So if that was, yeah, that was.
So we would be able to meet that possibly?
Okay.
Which is good.
Really concentrate.
Really?
So Daryl, do you guys think that the CPI is enough to keep up with your guys' ongoing costs? Or is there another metric you guys need to look at?
It's better than, than nothing that we've been increasing it.
Right.
Well, I, I think it's also good to consider that with our water treatment facility, um, what is proposed is a, a green sand.
Green sand.
And it's going to need to be replaced. You know, five, 10 years down the road, we need to fix into our thought process that it, it's going to need to be replaced at some point, so we need to consider.
Not necessarily the facility, just the sand.
Just the sand, just the sand, but there, you know, there's upkeep and all sorts of stuff that we need to work into.
That's why I wonder if CPI is going to be adequate for, because again, you guys have fixed costs that are not going to change no matter what happens to the price of bread, gasoline, those consumer goods that are, and sometimes you might get lucky, the CPI can go up higher, so there can be a, you know, sometimes that can be a good thing, but sometimes the average isn't that good. There was a period there during the Great Recession where things stayed pretty flat.
But even if the CPI jumps substantially, it's a trickle-down effect, and then we're paying employees because they get the same, and then we're paying employees more as well, so while it may jump substantially, sometimes that's a different thing. Always to the greater.
Correct.
Now everything pays more and everything else.
Most of your union negotiations for cost of living adjustments and stuff have a relationship to CPI. That's correct.
Counselor Johnson, you're pretty quiet. I know that this has been a, a bond contention for you. I, I really think it would be great to hear from you.
Well, um, first of all, I'd like to see, you know, what, what reference you were talking about or ordinance or what the path or the direction that it was to follow the CPI. Um, and then, you know, taking that average, I think CPI from '09 to now, you know, 12 years roughly, you can, you can say, hey, it's, it's average. And then apply it to each year. And I did some quick numbers, um, today, just with what would be, um, that one, two, and three percent since, actually, I actually went from 2008.
Okay.
Um, which still, it puts us, if we could just went with 1%, it would have been, um, our current bill, and I was using the 43 number, not splitting the water and sewer out.
So $43, starting at year 2008, ending 2020 at 1%?
Yeah, I actually went to 2021, thinking the previous would stretch to then, but.
You can totally do that.
Still, um, and so the, the calculator you're using is showing the CPI, right? So it's, um, I would say that we've averaged, if that's, if that's, um.
It won't even let me do that though.
Oh, yeah, so just go to 20. That's, I had the numbers for 20. So 48, what I had was 48. And this is a compounding number. So I was just using simply Excel going, hey, we're starting at 43, then we're going to add 1%. I'm going to add onto that 101, now it's going to be 101 or 102 and change. So, so it ends up being a 48 and change. So if that number 53 is, is really, you know, um, showing that the average CPI has been somewhere between 1 and 2 over this, you know, 18 years, uh, 12 years, then you know, it's, it's not unreasonable to say that, that what we should have been doing would have amounted today to a 13.8 increase over that time. We did, well, sorry, between 13.8 and 29.36.
At, at a 1%.
Between 1 and 2 is, is that range. And so, um, we missed out on all that, you know, revenue, and it sounds like it was already adopted by prior councils, so um, you know, I'm wondering if there's just a simple administrative.
It can't, the way it's written, it has to be done in that year based on that CPI, so if it wasn't done, it wasn't done in that January period, it's using or losing.
So we may need to just amend that if we're going outside of what was adopted as an ordinance saying that, hey, we're going to use a CPI, and then it was never implemented, and we can't just not jump. Sounds like we need to amend that ordinance or, or.
You would need to get a new resolution. The ordinance took it out of doing it at ordinance anymore, and then it just became resolution only, and then the council to retroactively do something like that, would either need to amend it or set a base rate and then say this is going to go up by the CPI or whatever. You guys come up with as far as a replacement, you know, cost or something like that, you know, and again, that might be something, I know, I do know we have a, you know, what are we using for the, um, increase on geothermal rates? Isn't that, that's based on a utility rate?
It's a CPI.
It's a CPI as well.
I think it's, it's that a minimum though. Is it 2. something?
Right, and that might be the way to do it too, is to say it goes up by the CPI, but it will always go up a minimum of X rate. But again, that's, that's a policy decision and also based on what you guys think you need, and I think if you're going to sell that, you need to have some data on what projecting future costs, things of that nature, so.
So this is now we're doing out right here at 1.62, which is, which is coming close to what you were doing, so.
So one of the things that I'm thinking is, one, timing. Timing is critical. Um, obviously, people are still at a financial loss, some people are. Business is, you know, continuing to see, we don't know what the beginning of January is going to look like. I know that, you know, just from employees, from employers, there's a big jump in January possibly with taxes that they're going to have to make up. So I can say specifically speaking, several hundred of dollars that we didn't have taken out, which we cannot opt out of as a private citizen. January else, and they're going to start doubling that on people. So I don't know if that was every employee, or if that's fed only or state. Um, if you guys had an option, but, you know, you look at increasing 15%, that's also something that's going to financially affect people. And we're still in a pandemic. Uh, you know, is this the right time to do that?
Yeah, it's a double-edged sword.
True, I get it. I, I've never ever complained about the water rates here because I find them extremely cheap. However, I find that they don't deliver quality product, in my opinion, but.
And we've lost a lot of revenue by having water and sewer returned to turning on to people who aren't going to pay for it. So that's why I'm seeing there's a double-edged sword um, in almost every facet that I look at. Um, and it's never going to be a good time.
No, it's not going to be perfect for anyone, and that's where I think it's our job to really look at this, what's realistic to ask of our consumers. And is 15% realistic to ask overnight essentially? And that was the first jump was 15%. That's good stuff. Um, you know, and what is that due to? Small businesses, commercial, um, landlords who can't legally have somebody moving from their home that aren't paying their bills, but yet landlord still has to pay the water, you know, and I'm thinking, man, that's, you got two or three houses, you're, you're really going to take it in shorts come January, you know, and, and I've never doubted that. I know our water rates need to go up eventually. I'm curious where we are on the loan and the project, because that's been my big concern, is if we haven't moved forward in two years, it feels like, that I've been on the council.
And also, you know, USDA on COVID yet.
And I understand all that, but that was it, we, we got a very similar issue prior to. And I don't know firsthand because we didn't, I mean, Michelle isn't here, so I've never doubted, Michelle would be very transparent, but we don't know where it was prior to, and I can't think anything that was told to us prior to for this topic.
So I think we should start today in where the project is. Like just start right now. So I had a meeting this. Like just start right now. So I had a meeting this morning with Darryl and Jeff. We went over, um, USDA loan is ready for me to push to mid, which I will do today. I haven't yet, but I will submit it today.
Okay. See, and that's, and, and I know you know this is no fault of yours. I bought it, I would've submitted a loan.
It was.
It was.
It was.
It was.
Okay.
If you remember, it was a. Sort of, but anyway, then they wanted the update on it.
Okay.
We were probably a little slow with some of the.
We, yeah, we were in the middle of one, and we were behind.
We were slow getting, and then we needed the audit. And then they came back and said they needed the resolutions. Michelle, you got that?
Okay.
They got that submitted. So the way we've got it set up now is Michelle needs. Has to push the button. So we need to push the button. Uh, they haven't had anybody to, they have not reviewed any of the documents we've submitted. So.
So we're kind of square one.
We're kind of square one, but Kimberly has told me that they have personnel now to review it. We're gonna have a call next week with Kimberly at USDA, and they're gonna try to get the thing off the ground.
Okay.
So in addition to that.
If you are, welcome to come too.
You're great, huh?
I've also, okay, I've also put out dealers for, um, outside funding other than USDA. So I talked to Washington Federal today, and they have a, uh, rate, uh, construction rate that we get an advantage of, which we would like to. Um, I've got a phone call into Colby, which is, uh, their specialty is rural water treatment facilities. Um, and I'll continue for, going for that. And I have talked to Larry Holstein independently of USDA, where he believes he can fund it as well, privately.
Mm-hmm.
Except for Larry Holstein's business organ, when it's state money instead of, um.
We're approved, we're approved through letter.
Okay.
There, there's, they would rather have USDA involved to get really long land to hold it down. But we have the approval.
Okay.
That's true.
Yeah. So also I was trying to do is give us options. Well, we want to move for the best interest, right? Like, because it has been kind of in suspended mode, I was wanting to say, let's see if we can leverage somewhere, um, while USDA comes through, so at least we can start the project. Um, and so that's what I've been working on. And working with Darryl and Jeff on how, how that we should put that together. And then, once that's all come together, then we'll come to council. Um, I think that we're probably, uh, there still hasn't been a definitive, uh, decision made on what type of facility that we want. So I think we're still about six months out in that planning. Um, but so while that was going on, I figured I could find money so that we can at least start. So that's where it's at.
And we're, we're calling this project now the Water Treatment Plant Project, but there's actually much more to it than that. You know, with, with the entire master plan, there's a lot of pipelines getting fixed, there's wells getting rehabbed, there's, uh, treatment for the North Well for arsenic, you know, there's a lot of, a lot more components, you know. About sixty-five percent of it is the plant, but, you know, for that well, there's a lot of stuff involved, a lot more.
Well, and that's one of the things is, we talked about the electronic meters, things like that. And I think one of our biggest issues that I hear from people is, I have a very large family washer, dryer, dishwasher running numerous times a day. And my water bill is smaller than somebody with two kids, two people in their entire home. And I think some of that attributes to the meter's age and possibly some of their pipelines. I don't know. But it just doesn't make sense.
You have one of the door meters in town.
Exactly. I know that. And, and so that's why I always go, how do we have a hundred dollar water bill with two people in there?
Usually the older the meter is, the less water it reads.
See, I, I'm, I thought maybe it was in the reverse, because it just didn't make sense.
No, it's the other way around, yeah.
But I think if we are gonna do it, you're gonna pay thousands of dollars in fees for the loan process anyways. You might as well look at, you know, making sure we're upgrading to that quality that we wanna be in anyways. And I'm, I mean, go super analytical and look at what time, and, and we kind of talked about how much time and money it saves you on the part of an employee. I think it probably is more than we really would anticipate here calculating, because I know how many days go on, go back, and have to, you know, look back or whatever, that stuff, and, or weather issues, you know, that we deal with. Um, and I, I don't know what the feasibility of putting something like that in there, but I would certainly like to entertain that idea. Which we can council, you know?
Three hundred and fifty in the whole thing.
I don't think that's that bad, I guess. But when you're talking about, you know, the ease, longevity, and then the customer satisfaction, because you can set parameters as a, uh, customer that says, notify me when my bill goes really high, you know? And that tells you, A, you got a leak, or B, put water in the lawn, or the kids are doing something they shouldn't be doing, you know? And those are huge things that customers want to know, especially when we're budgeting like crazy these days, you know? But I don't think that's that bad. I mean, that's a lot of work in the beginning, but I would like to make it longer. It's a lot easier for you guys.
So you could look at, all of the financing agencies are just looking at the base rate. So you, you could look at just raising the base rate and then not raising the unit cost of water after the base rate is huge. That's another option. Base rate, the pack, the packs, you know, like the hospital.
Yeah. So are we looking at just the base rate for the base rate and the per unit over above the base? This was just base rate, wasn't it?
I wanted to include the per unit price as well.
Oh, okay. So what would be the increase on the per unit price?
Every customer would be different. You know, some people, wouldn't affect them at all, because they never use over a minimum. Some people.
Well, but what are we looking at? Increasing the rate from?
The same, fifteen to start with.
Oh, so fifteen.
It's one cent, it's one cent per cubic foot right now.
Jeff, do you want to give us two Darwin?
There's seven and a half gallons per cubic foot. Any rates now?
Oh, I have that, okay.
How many accounts do we still have?
Sixteen hundred, I think. That's probably based all of the projections on. I hope that's, yeah, it's close to fifteen.
Close to sixteen?
Fifteen.
Fifteen, four, four like fifteen?
Yeah.
Those are total accounts?
The payment was four hundred and thirty-five thousand a year.
Yeah.
Looking at being, on average. You know, just using a four hundred and thirty-five thousand. Four hundred and sixty, plus around four sixty. So, I mean, four sixty and fifteen hundred accounts. We're looking, we didn't get out of each account three hundred and six dollars more a year to cover your costs. Um, you know, that's, that's more than, um, more than twenty dollars per, you know, per month. Twelve months ago. We're really looking at like a twenty-five and a half dollar per month increase. And that, that's, you know, necessary so that we're not losing money the first year of the payment. However, if we were to use then a CPI after that, you know, if we, if we put the rates at twenty-five dollars more a year, we can lock it in if we chose to, or we could then increase it according to CPI and then have, um, more than the amount, which could then backfill, you know, you know, upgrading sewer lines and water lines even more so, before the twenty-five years is out. You know, when I put that little spreadsheet together, I mean, just using that CPI, I mean, we should be, just as, as, you know, if we've done what was originally adopted by a town council prior to us, you know, it should've been going up and should be somewhere near fifty dollars a month right now. And that's at a, at a fair one point six roughly, you know, increase over those twelve years. So, um, that's the past, we can't change that. But, but what I'm seeing is, you know, when I was originally here, it was gonna be like twenty dollars. We even took twenty dollars a month. Um, that's a forty-six percent increase on what we're, people are paying as a base rate now, forty-six percent. So doing fifteen, you're gonna still need to make up thirty more to get to where we need to be. And I was being at twenty dollars. If it's more like twenty-five, we're kinda in a situation where it's gonna go up a lot more than what we're at right now. And that's, you know, um, that's something we have to consider. And then we have to, you know, I mean, to do this project, yeah, four hundred and sixty thousand dollar payments are gonna be due. And that's locked in, so that is over the twenty-five years. Uh, so. When we get up to that point, I mean, we can take a loss for a few years, and then, once it catches up. But we've got, yeah, we've got to do something. There's no way to pay for this project without. And that's, that's the frustration I've had over this, you know, all along, is that we talked about this openly in meetings, that this may not solve the problem with a lot of people's water. We are already on a schedule to replace pipes. And we, we did second, uh, you know, street, you know, second, not that long ago. We did, you know, other streets, uh, since we've been on the council and, and over the years. I mean, they're all on a timeline. Now, yes, this, this covers a whole lot more, especially fixing wells that need treatment. We just have to decide what we wanna do. And I just don't think it's gonna necessarily solve the problem for a lot of folks who have old pipes in the ground, that went through the meter, into the house, and throughout the house. And that's, that's the problem that people are still gonna face. When you leave for a couple of days and you come back and your water is brown, it's because it's been sitting between the street and you in, in pipes that are old. And they're rusted, corroded, and maybe be relaxed. We've been telling people that, you know.
But you know, I'll, I'll be honest, when I was here, it was the first thing I came to the town council six years ago, to, because I was disgusted. And I lived in town, and I didn't believe it till I moved to a different house with new lines. And I went, I have one. One day I had an issue in the entire year, if that. Um, but it was substantially different. Otherwise, I don't have this, I have hard water, we have hard water, we're cured of it. Um, but it doesn't corrode, it doesn't look like, it doesn't smell or taste like anything like, you see, I can buy white clothing where I live now. It was that much better. But I do believe that is some of the issue. And I don't believe it's necessarily, because in my track in the meeting that we would've had two years ago, wasn't somewhere around eighty percent of the piping replaced from eighty forward, or?
Yeah, something like that.
It was, it was a substantial number. I was shocked by it myself.
Over sixty percent.
And I, I think that, you know, we have a lot of older homes. And I'm really, I, I agree with you, Darryl, when your concern is, is people are gonna be paying for a lot of things, and they're not gonna realize that their own home lines are causing, like the prettiest water through that line, but then you're gonna put it in a hundred plus year old mine, and turn it to sludge, you know, um.
I, I talked to.
We're not responsible for that.
I talked to a person, uh, in Junction City that runs their water department there. They put in a green sand filter about twelve years ago. And he said, within a year, they had, you know, almost completely remedied their situation.
Really?
Yeah.
Majority of the community, and that's an older community as well, I could say, that probably has been in a similar situation.
It's been economical to run. Uh, they don't use chlorine gas. They use liquid chlorine to maintain chlorine in their system. But he said they've been very satisfied with, and he'd been there ten years before the plant went in. He's been there ten years since, eleven years since. And he said he's very happy with the result. And their main concerns, their main problems was iron and manganese. So, uh, it was really a, you know, he felt very strongly that it was the right direction to go.
So I'm not, I'm not saying we don't do it. I'm just saying how are we gonna get to charging twenty-five more dollars a month within the next five years? And it's even more than that, because, you know, all these prices of materials are gonna cost more. A year and a half, two years ago, we thought it was ten million. And I, I'm not sure how much that's gonna change. The price of all goods is going way higher. And we know that when we get bids, it's coming in higher than what we were projecting on all projects that we've seen recently. So, you know.
We can, we can also chop the project up into, you know, a ten year plan instead of a two year plan to accomplish everything that's in the master plan. You know, we could go, with the first phase of it would be a green sand filter to get rid of the iron and manganese on that site that we already have. That would be, what, six million dollars, thereabouts.
And our payments would only be on the draw amount?
Payments would only be whatever we do.
Whatever we spend.
Draw, what we pulled down.
Probably the agencies will want to.
Say, close it.
Just fund it.
Yeah.
That's, that's.
I will also throw out there, folks, that we are at probably the lowest interest rates in generations as well. So that, that's the other, the stuff has gotten more expensive, but you're borrowing money right now at a cost that isn't even, I mean, the interest that you're looking at on this thing, if you project that forward, I mean, it's not, that's not even keeping up with inflation at that low of an interest rate. So that is the other flip side of this, is you're kind of in a once in a lifetime opportunity to try to do as much as you can.
And like Mark said, if you don't put money into your infrastructure, it comes back to bite you later, you know, or you're hurting yourself.
And, and that's why I think the timing, to me, is the part that we have to finesse better. I think that, I don't know with fifteen percent increase, I would maybe like to level it out more than anything, maybe. If we do it, um, rather than, you know, fifteen percent, I'm gonna choose smaller now.
Well, it's something to chew on, because she probably, I don't wanna take up the whole time, because we've got council in a little bit. And I know that there's people here for the, uh.
Sunshine.
Sunshine Children's. So, um, I wanna be aware of that. Why don't they schedule another time for us to meet? Um, Mayor, what would you like to do?
Uh, we'll, we have one next week.
A work session?
Or you could do for the other meetings.
Well, I wanna get, I wanna get this off the ground here, going.
Can you guys, can, can everyone meet next week?
Yeah.
The same day, same time?
Next Tuesday, works for me.
Tuesday at three? Yes, 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 yes. Okay, good, Tuesday. We'll continue our conversation. Thank you.
Hey, let's go on down, uh, Sunshine Children's Center discussion. We have two that are arrested in it. Um, Mark?
Do you want me to just sit back here?
Yeah, you're fine.
I'm asking of the town, would be for the town to donate it to either the county
or the Lake County School District for, to start up the, um, All Ted program again. And it'll be a work program. Um, the reason that we wanna ask this is, the kids do a lot better off campus from the All Ted program. And, um, I don't have any preference whether you donate it to the county or you donate it to the school district. But like I discussed with you earlier, Mayor, I would have a contract with whoever you do. And if that, um, program is in existence anymore, if they take it away, that the town receives that property back. And in other words, the county can't sell it. The school district can't sell it. And it's given back to the city if that program ceases. Um, many of you know how successful the All Ted program was, um, earlier. It was a great work program. Many kids have graduated from it and gone on to either trade school or college. And when I was in the. Um, it was a great work program. Many kids have graduated from it and gone on to either trade school or college. And when I was in the juvenile department, it was the first step into stopping juvenile crime. And, um, so that's where I'm hitting with it right now.
Well, yeah, also, you might discuss, you know, you guys can do all the work on it and get it up.
So the, the county, and I, I did a talk to my commission about it, but the way I wanted to go is the town donates the land, the ca- the property. The county will do the maintenance on the property as our skin in the game. And the school district will, um, provide the, the teaching and the teachers and the work program. So.
How many kiddos are enrolled in the Al program?
Now, I don't know. When I was in it, uh, involved in it, or we had a waiting line and there was twenty-six kids in it. Um, I know that that's fallen way off. And so, um, I wanna get it going again because it was such an outstanding program. And to have it be successful is, we need to have somewhere off-campus. And like, like everybody else, the school district can't really provide that because of money and, and what have you. And so.
Well, I do know they've been having some problems, those kids have, with the other kids.
Oh, yeah. I mean, the, the need for the Al Ted program never stopped just because the original program.
So does that change given we have Lakeview Academy? Are they in-
So Lakeview Academy will be the Al Ted.
Okay, so then we'll utilize it.
And it's a matter of, for a beach on how they structured it, um, to get loans and grants and that sort of thing.
Like a place for them to go and have people, they're going resources and internet and all that.
So full disclosure, I do reference the school districts. I wanted to throw that out there. If, whatever the town decides to do with a proposal like this, this would need to be renoticed. Or obviously a work session or any serious discussion gets done on that, this would need to be noticed while the hearing to prior making decision, just like we did last time. Any different use, any different, good sale, donation, however that works, any particular change in use or anything where you're disposing of real property has to be held for notice. So that's the only thing I wanna tell you guys as far as, and again, you can put in property, if it is sold for a dollar or something like that, there can be, um, reversionary language put into the deed where it does revert back to someone's purpose or purpose, or something along those lines. And that is recognized as something that's been, been legal for years. Foundations it all the time. So that is possible if the council's interested in going back to the route. Not saying that you should or shouldn't.
I think the school, and I'm not speaking for the school district, but they would, I think the Al Ted program would be into a low-cost lease even, if that's how you guys wanna do it. And so I'm throwing that out there too. I'm just wanting to get the program started. And so, um, Sunshine Center is, uh, fits the need, so.
Okay, thank you. Charlie?
Our position continues to be we'd like to have town give the, uh, property and building to the health district. Our purpose would be to raise the building and build a new daycare center. And share the cost of the daycare center with the larger employers in the community. So B L N for service, school district. We have a great need in this community for daycare, as most parents will adhere to or attest to. Something that, uh, for those, essentially for those that don't meet the qualifications for head start.
But it would be a for-profit business, is that correct?
No.
So it would be a non-profit?
It would be a non-profit.
So I'm just wondering, is that building big enough? We could do both?
Space is not.
There's not enough space?
Yeah, I think the daycare would fill it up real quick because of the clock, the square footage.
I've never been in the building, so I didn't.
Yeah, you get about twenty kids per room and you, I mean, you get two classrooms and that's about it.
Okay. Just throwing that out there.
The building itself, those that have been in the building know that it is structurally, um, challenged. It, uh, has problems with A D A compliance. You'd have to spend a great deal of money to fix it up. Frankly, you'd be spending, throwing good money after bad. The best option, unfortunately, is we find with many buildings in this community, it's frankly cheaper to build a new one.
But if we give it to the health district, are they a for-profit business?
I beg your pardon?
The health district is a non-profit.
So the health district is a publicly, uh, uh, it's a public health district.
Okay.
It's a voted on, non-taxpaying, nonprofit business.
Okay.
As all health districts are in the state of Oregon. Very much like a school district or a water district. Public entity.
Again, if the council's interested in entertaining the proposal, I think it would probably be for you to set up a public hearing during a, a meeting, have both proposals presented, maybe some detail on that, because again, the, the public hearing is supposed to kind of focus us out what the council knows about the building, proceeds, things of that nature, potentially even getting evaluation of it. I ran a couple of estimates what that would cost. We're in the about the one seventy-five to two hundred dollar range from local brokers to do that, what the building would be valued at as far as. And then, because that's information that's required by statute, depending on the right of the public, as far as what we know. And then the council can make a decision after that hearing, if that's a public reason.
I thought we were getting a setup of public hearing?
Uh, we haven't gotten, we, we, you guys want us to cost first. And so if you guys want us to get C M A on it with that cost, if you're okay with that, it's fine. But there are none of them that are free. So that's what we're, we wanna make sure you guys were okay with spending that money, calling that route particularly. So if that's something that we're authorized to do, we'll, uh, we'll want to get you guys the cost first.
I think one of the things we really need to decide is do we wanna retain it and find a way to make a profit, Emily? Or do we wanna not retain it? That's one of the first questions.
I don't, I think, I need to, we don't, we're running out of time. I think we need to-
Next week? Next, I have it on now.
Yeah.
Uh, it can't be next week. We don't have the, well, you guys can generally discuss it, but if you're gonna go more for a decision or anything along those lines, it would need to be publicly noticed. And we can have a work session, just generally discuss the building in general.
Right.
But as far as any, were any decisions made, you need to have a public hearing to kind of focus us out.
So can I go?
Well, I'm just saying, when we talked about this a couple of weeks ago, we, we, Mickey was on the same line I was. I thought they were gonna get a bit of a market analysis for this piece of property so we knew where it's worth. I think that needs happening before we really discuss it and we can move on. I mean, the cost is only a couple of hundred if we're able to get this done. It's a very small jumping bucket if we want, if we want to entertain the idea of selling it on open market, you know. I'm hoping that all the other suggestions are out there.
But you want to succeed in it?
Yeah.
We'll get it ordered then.
Table that. Right now, we'll discuss that in another work session. But we'll, in the meantime, we'll find out what the building's worth. Okay. And we'll go ahead and adjourn the work session for right now at, uh, four oh four. And we'll move over into town council meeting. We'll call the river session, order of four oh seven. Use sonnet, you're going to stand, put the question.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, in the middle of liberty and justice.
Do I have a motion to the office agenda?
Okay, motion made afterwards.
Second? Motion's made in second, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Move on down, uh, to the consent agenda. Which also includes council minutes from June, July, August, and September. We have a motion on that.
So I apologize if I get, I thought it was gonna be an email and I saw one page of it, but it's all these minutes. So I'm not ready to go on the minutes themselves, but the, these minutes are presented actually from our recorder, right? And they're actually verbatim. They're not, you know, the minutes. Minutes can be summarized in, in a couple of pages. So, I mean, if you wanna go to this format, I, I like it because it's nice to see it, but it's not really summarized in the mean. You can't catch the bullet points of, which is what minutes should be, so.
It doesn't meet the state requirements, in my opinion, but maybe they're just different.
No, I'm, so you're saying that catching bullet points and who wrote it what isn't the state requirement?
No, I'm saying these minutes do that.
Yeah, yeah, you're agreeing with me. Yeah, so, um, I mean, I, I know the purpose behind this, especially for someone important, more important, they're all important.
I can quickly put that on our wrist, I think. Okay.
Okay. Out of public comment period, citizens may address the council on items on the agenda or not on the agenda. Out of respect for the council and others in attendance, please limit your comments to three minutes. Please state your name and address for the record. Do you have any public comments?
I think maybe this Francie Winters, I represent, uh, well, I work for the Lake Health District and so I'm the prevention coordinator here. And, um, uh, I, I would just like to say that, that our community is in dire need of, of, of a community center of some sort, especially for those under-supported or under-resourced kids, kids that don't have much, that don't have a mom that's gonna take them to all these different things. And, um, it, the one that we talk about today may not be the right space because I certainly don't want to advocate for the town to, or anybody to go into, um, debt that they, or a project that they can't afford. But, uh, we certainly need something and this, this location is a really great potential location for something that, that enables our community to come together and have a, a communal space to, um, to, to build, um, what we call resiliency among kids so that they are less likely to get into risky behaviors and things like that. So, thank you. That's, that's why I'm here.
Thank you. Anybody else? Ignorant man, we'll go on down to department report. Thank you. Nine one one, stop? Not here. Dennis, fire?
The only thing I might add is that, you know, our training has picked up quite a bit. We're still working through some bugs on that software, getting that where everybody can be interacting on it. We're moving along. We've got more training at the end of this week. And then we'll have some more, it's looking like it's gonna be some more ocean stuff probably before December. We'll have a pack of the battles come out here probably in the next couple of weeks.
Okay. Do you have other words?
Um, I thought, Darrell, you're gonna talk about the, the two projects. Mainly, I just wanted to touch on the projects that we have started, uh, on the cooling water project and that the hall waste station is, um, I'd say about forty percent complete. So I just wanted to talk about those. I think Darrell's gonna touch on those two projects as well, so.
Okay. Do you have anything to add, Darrell? You think?
Uh, the cooling water project is going ahead. If you drive down Stock Drive, you'll want into it. Please drive careful if you go down that way. Hopefully we'll be off of those, uh, and onto M Street here by the first of the month, I'm hoping. So, uh, there's quite a bit of traffic on, on Stock Drive. Red Rock's building their, uh, high-strength waste pond, you know, on that piece that they purchased from the town. So there's a lot of truck traffic on there now too, so that's added some of it. The hall waste building is, is going ahead as planned. See, uh, it's there. We did do a little work on the deal system last Friday. Ran into some things that, uh, we had noticed some of our expansion tanks are, are saturated or waterlogged. Just getting that, thinking for that. Everybody's, uh, had heat for the first cold day. Schools had a little bit of, uh, startup problems there, not last month, but the month before that. We got going with that. So everything's looking good for the winter on that. Uh, the wood stove program's going ahead. All the inspections were changed out and, um, some people wanna heat pump, but it won't work. So those were done today, so we have one to reschedule, um, to, uh, that's, that's completed.
Okay. Um, now, I'm here from Michelle. Do you have anything to add?
Yes. Um, we asked Jeff Hedlin to write up some, uh, contracts, agreements for the North Water Extension and we got those finalized. Today, we'll be going out and getting signatures from Larson and Stabs to absorb the additional one hundred fifty thousand dollars. We just split it between the two of them at seventy-five thousand. And.
And if Emress, if the agreement also provides that if we do get, um, an annexation agreement with Emress, um, the corrosion's replacement, that, that will be reduced proportionally by the property tax amounts that are coming in from however much they come in. So they will not be on hook for that if Emress gives events to join the hold on that. So that way they're not stuck with it.
That's called for the one that goes up, Emerson.
Yes. Emress per liked to say.
Um, that's all?
Okay. Move on down to whole business. Ordinance eight seven two, an ordinance providing for adoption of comprehensive plan amendments, recognized economic opportunities, and housing needs for the town of Lakeview.
Mr. Mayor, if it's the council's pleasure and they do not want to go through, going through the documents, there needs to be a motion to read by title only, as we've asked. If that's what folks want to do with that, otherwise it needs to be, it'll need to be read and choose up a reason.
I have a motion to review the ordinance eight seven two.
I'll second.
Motion's made in second, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Those opposed? All right, um, under whole business, North End Water Extension signed paperwork regarding additional amount.
Mr. Mayor.
We need to vote on the order.
Oh, I'm sorry. You know, I'm, I'm moving too fast.
And I don't know that there was a vote.
No, I'm, we're on eight seven two, right?
Right.
We have not.
I look like, I don't.
Yeah, that was just one. Um.
That was all that was-
Yes, sorry. I was just trying to get through all these pages. Right.
So I don't know that you had a full vote on the push by title only.
Yeah, I should just say that.
I just said yes.
Oh, perfect.
Yeah, I was just trying to read through this to make sure I had the right options and run it.
Okay. Now.
I know, I know, you know, the committee that was born, the grant, there's a word, um, contractor that did the work, which was, um, the Speaker of Northwest, um, who did this. We, we looked at it, the staff, what it says to adopt, a motion to, uh, regulations to adopt this. Right. Hopefully it wants to have a chance to look it over. We're in the process. I know it just doesn't project that we're gonna see any growth in the next twenty years or, or if any, it's very, very small. Um, you know, Red Rock, another thing we're considering, but it, well, it is, uh, maybe not the look that we felt, those that sat on that committee felt was really gonna happen. But, um, all that aside, you know, it is, it is a, you know, it's an improvement on our comprehensive plan. So that's why- so that's why we're currently actually doing approval ordinance, uh, eight seven two. Which is an ordinance providing for adoption of comprehensive plan amendments, recognizing, recognizing economic opportunity and housing needs for the town.
I'll second.
Motion made in second, vote in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Daryl, North End Water Extension signed paperwork regarding additional amount. Is that all we're gonna take care of?
Yeah, Jeff got those, uh, got those agreements made, so.
Okay.
With, uh.
And then we have a leadership training.
We need an approval on those.
No, because it's with, it's a big manager, a lot of, a lot of council.
Okay.
So, all right.
Uh, leadership training and management, that, uh, will be Thursday, Friday.
Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Friday.
And Saturday, Sunday for Florida Department's project.
Whatever, whatever days you can make. Thursday and Friday are gonna be the same classes as Saturday and Sunday. It's just, you can, you have to shift around, you can do that, or whatever. Imagine you're gonna have a lot of staff volunteers on Thursday and Friday, and some of them will spread out Saturday and Sunday.
Uh, we'll move on down to new business. Council President Dorvan, round up tavern.
I'll put on a different hat at the moment, just relating to the fact that, you know, my employers, the county board commissioners, to, um, entertain the idea of having the council consider, um, accepting the round up tavern. It's something that the county foreclosed on. What we talked about is just over here on East Street, eleven, uh, North East Street, uh, which was an old chair last tile company most recently. It's considered by, you know, those that, that know it best, that live here probably has the ground up tavern site. Building is, you know, fully closed, in terrible, terrible shape. They all put together a report on how much that would cost to, to bring out to the speed, to, you know, fix the roof and the floor, and any other electrical and plumbing situations that would happen there to, to make it a usable building. Francine has seen it and, um, you know, as county land sale manager, still the foreclosures, I've shown it to a few folks. Went through the foreclosure process in that we, um, every year, a project is due to us in October, and then we, uh, have a board make an order to what we want to sell. Um, we, we, you know, got title to it through the foreclosure process. That, that auction happened, uh, in June. No, no one presented themselves as, um, interested in the building at the, uh, set price of sixty thousand, or sixty percent below market value. So it's now at forty percent, which is still three, three thousand and change. Look to, I have to reduce that considerably to the lowest, maybe fifty percent of the tally of, uh, buy it. So, not buy, but, um, maybe buy. Like, like, you know, we're talking out with the Sunshine Center, we could probably sell for a dollar or whatever. There's state statute, and so a little more in depth that I could go into later, but. You all read the building, it's something that, that, you know, in the downtown area, it'd be something certainly we could, we could use for a number of different, um, options as a town. I mean, I, I look at it as a, a great opportunity for tourism as well. You know, we've talked a lot about the tourism dollars, and, and it can be used for the facilities. Therefore, I think that that would be a great long-term investment, uh, that town could make to really present a very, very nice building downtown that could host a number of events, as well as provide youth and, and those who, who want a place to relax, you know, downtown, maybe, grab a meal to go and may have some, you know, whatever the case may be, whatever long-term vision of this, the future of council comes up here.
I wouldn't want the council, as long as the council, if the council decides to go forward with this, as long as you guys keep it, you're fine. If you guys decide to sell later, it would require, and it's not super ownership, a suit-to-quiet title, because you cannot get title insurance after a tax foreclosure for ten years without going to a suit-to-quiet title.
Well, I do know, the girls told me that, uh, there's a water bill still over on that.
So if we took it on, obviously, we're gonna probably wipe that away from ourselves, and we're sure, because we can pay ourselves. Uh, but yeah, the next buyer, you know, they, they get these properties as is, so if we didn't undertake it, then the next purchaser would have to come up. That as well as the cost.
How much would it cost to fix that, Daryl?
Nothing.
Uh, I went up there at a request of the community partnership, so, uh, I cut some holes in the floor. Put me adding, got it on the rub, uh, add some water to it. It wasn't in a totally bad shape as we thought. Construction type is, like, all the other buildings downtown, you know, the common walls and things, and, um, I didn't know it was on the agenda. So I didn't bring that report I did for them. Uh, I'm sure they'll allow to share it, but. No, I can't quite remember. It seemed like I had three hundred thousand.
Can I speak, three hundred thirty-five thousand?
Okay, thank you.
Yes, because I just looked at it, so, yeah.
Well, obviously, that would take a number of years to recoup our costs and do it on that. But there, there are certain projects we could look at, certainly historical brands, um, you know, I'm not sure exactly of, of construction on that building, but. Some could tell me it's probably early nineteen hundreds.
Yeah.
Well, I'm anticipating it's, you know, to fix that up and stuff.
So you're saying that we go to fourteen percent or forty percent here. How long?
So it's half three percent now, and that's it. Well, it's a sense that like eighty thousand dollars or so, so. Um, you know, the, the foreclosure rules, we can't adjust that because we probably, we're in the scrap, so we'll go with that. So, you know, it's at thirty-three and change right now. You know, it stays at forty percent till sold, or, um, after a year at forty percent, it'll drop down to twenty-five percent. But the county's not even interested in, in charges.
Are you the logic?
Yes. We, I mean, we realize that, that the building is in, you know, terrible shape, so, I mean, although, you know, it's structurally, you know, as common wall that can be salvaged, there's a lot of hook, like three hundred, you know, three hundred thousand, that's, that's, you know.
And what are the taxes on that?
So, you know, as a foreclosure property, there's no taxes on it, and it obviously would stay as a non-exempt to, to the show that, you know.
Just, I, I just, it just gets me a benefit right now. I mean, it would be great if it ran.
Well, we have our, all our other projects going now that I think is more important.
But is that because it's a beautiful building with a ton of potential?
It would be nice if someone would do it next time. I'm not sure that it's the project, the town, if we take on it.
It'll be a while before the town can touch it.
All the other projects, we are going them are more important to the whole town.
Yeah, if you, if you guys did take ownership, then there, I mean, there is, if it was properly secure, there's some liability protection, but there can be kids ever got into it or something along those lines. The other issue is you have shared walls, and if you're not properly maintaining what you own, with shared walls, there can be some casualties.
And there is concern about that. I've heard about it, and there are squatters in there that were found this couple of weeks ago.
The county took steps to make sure it was locked up, and it's, you know, does have some hell brackets on there that were screwed in to check on them. I know Tom Daddy, you know, next door, at the bike shop, does check on it, make sure that.
It's a couple of weeks ago, he might have somebody in there.
Yeah, it was, it was just a couple of weeks.
Yeah, okay, right before.
I'm sure, I think it was last week.
Okay, maybe two weeks?
Yeah.
Okay.
We were reporting this. Anyway, so, I mean, if I now put my county council back on, you know, I, I look at it as, as, yeah, it's, it's a huge, uh, call. I don't have the numbers on what we might be adding. If this council agreed to save fifty percent for long-range projects, um, over now two years roughly, and I know we haven't spent all the money, um, what that puts us at, I mean, at the start, but that's certainly driving up to fix it all in one shot. Yes, we have a lot of other projects, but, you know, then you're using that fifty percent of the seventy that we voted in the group to save as long-range projects, um, coming with logic tests. So, you know, if we, if we get an estimate, maybe even keep this on the agenda for next Tuesday as well, just to follow up to see what that number is. I'd be interested. I, I will say that, yeah, if the council doesn't want it, and, you know, I'm, I'm not, I'm kind of torn away as a council. I think I've land so manager, uh, I'm also torn because I, I think, you know, I'd like to see it in private hands for private business to succeed and, and to, or to stay on the tax rules. Obviously, that's gonna be a disappointment if it's off the tax rules. But, you know, like any project, if, if done right, you know, it can be a huge asset and benefit to the community, so it's just a matter of what we want to do with it. I think there's not necessarily a, um, you know, a building where you can just hang out and not have to, you know, require to spend money to be at downtown necessarily, so, I mean, that, that could be what, you know, Francine's also thinking about, where you could, you know, collect the youth in there, some, some computers, some games, and whatever, you know, an after-screed club kind of thing. There could be some partnerships there that we could get in and into. I think the county just, you know, because of the way we foreclosed on it, we're limited in what all we can do, so we can off, you know, offload it, and then, you know, that end user could, you know, could, could do much more with it.
It probably could be an asset, but it does, if this doesn't pay, because we don't have three hundred thousand dollars in our budget, you know, next year, the next year.
Well, I mean, if you put three hundred thousand into it, I would find it hard to believe that it'd be worth half a million dollars after that. It's four hundred thousand. If you never, that's more than one value is gonna be in your home, or your personal, I believe, but. And I, I'm not.
I'd like to see it, because it is a historic building, which I, I like to see restored, but I don't think that the town is, it's hard to do it.
Unfortunately, you know, I don't think anybody is an expert on the, um, historical grants that are out there, but, but there are definitely some out there.
There are, there are.
And I think that, you know, without knowing those details, yeah, it's.
Without a kidding.
Yeah, we can't under foreclosure, that's the problem.
No, but LCP can, but they're not.
Yeah, other agencies, the, the mission.
Uh, just a question for, uh, Daryl Anderson. Was that three hundred and thirty-five thousand, uh, relative to, uh, a full restoration of the property in the site, or pertaining to the roof and some of the more drastic issues as far as needing repair?
No, that was a full restoration.
That was a full restoration, so.
Mechanical system, electrical system.
Every, everything, yeah. So if you're looking at preserving the site, obviously, a property that's assessed at only eighty thousand, three hundred, putting three hundred and thirty-five thousand into it doesn't make a lot of sense, but if you're looking at preserving the site, I don't want to put Daryl on the spot in terms of asking him what he thinks of just the roof restoration would cost, but it would likely be a lot smaller than three hundred and thirty-five thousand. The roof is the main concern when we were all evaluating it, looking at it. The potential of a snow load in the future, collapsing in the walls then caving in, I think is what we were concerned about. And the fact that we're limited as a board is what we can do with putting dollars into the site that's been in foreclosure. That's all I have.
Even a hundred thousand dollars, it's like, I mean, people like to reap the money out of it.
And that's why, you know, that, I mean, we, we're just a leverage, you know, grants, that we wouldn't be into it, you know, as much if it was some of these historical grants. Just food for thought, so that's, it's on the agenda. We don't need to go into it all that much more. I mean, I don't think we'll hash it all out right now, but think about it. It's not going anywhere. Obviously, it's still on our list. If you went to the county's website and went on the land sale page, you'd still see it with thirty-three and change, available one of them today, so you know I can pick it up until, you know, we even real agree. And, and there is same, same as, uh, the Sunshine Center, there's, um, obligations that we have to meet. I think it's two publications we're going to, stated in, in, uh, the paper, what we're looking for.
We're at least a few weeks out. Okay. Discuss that, isn't it? Let's see what else we can come up with on it. Hey, anybody have anything else before we adjourn the meeting? Thank you for coming, Jay.
Oh, absolutely.
Okay, we'll adjourn the meeting at, uh, four thirty-one.